March 18th of 2025, would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you for being here this evening, and we have sort of a bittersweet news. Our city clerk, Stephanie Courtney, is leaving to take a much bigger job at Pierce County. And I'll let her explain exactly where she's going, and their gain is our heartbreak loss. And we've known Stephanie and worked with Stephanie for quite some time, and we've got a very special moment and recognition of her. I'll go to the dais and I'll read this, and Stephanie, will you want to meet me over here? Oh, yeah, come on up. Well, you know, I've known Stephanie for so many years that, and she just does phenomenal work with the City of Federal Way. We heard that she had taken a position with Pierce County, and she could talk about that. We were just so, you know, we just wanted to make sure that your work was recognized, and you are being provided with a key to the city for your very special work. And it says, "Presented to Stephanie Courtney by Mayor Jim Farrell. Thank you for your over 23 years of dedicated service and commitment to the City of Federal Way. Your passion for the city and attention to detail made us all better. Presented this March 18th, 2025." Let's give Stephanie a big round of applause.
Thank you, thank you. I wrote some stuff down, so hopefully I can get through it, but I have, I have Kleenexes here if I need it. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this a lot. Thank you, Council. Sorry. Twenty-three and a half years of service over the last 26 years honestly feels a little surreal. And in case you're wondering, I started when I was 12, so you're doing the math, doing the math. Mayor, thank you for this recognition, for you appointing me as city clerk back in 2014. I appreciate your leadership, your humor, and even your random movie quotes, movie references, and sports analogies we get so often. To the council, both current and past members, thank you. Your support of me and my department, excuse me, over the years has made a profound impact. I appreciate your dedication to this community and your thoughtful and kind words. There aren't many roles that give you the kind of view into the heart of an organization that I've been so fortunate to have. I'm so grateful for the unique privilege of working with people from every department and every level of the city. Trying to sum up nearly 24 years of service in just a few sentences feels almost impossible. But I will say this, Federal Way is home. I grew up here. Olympic View Elementary, Ilahi Junior High, Decatur High School, and I started with the city in 1998. And since then, I've lived through the changes, watched the city grow, and had the honor of growing alongside it both personally and professionally. I've learned that while local government might not always be glamorous, it's real, and it matters. And it's strong because people care enough to show up, just like all of you tonight. People who believe deeply in their community, sometimes with compliments and sometimes with feedback, but always with heart and always with a desire to make things better. Over the last decade as clerk, I've had the privilege of working with some truly exceptional people, and I just want to thank a few of them. EJ, you showed me that leadership isn't just about the work, it's about the people. Knowing someone's spouse's names, their kid's names, and what matters to them outside of the office is just as important as any professional achievement, so thank you. Brian, you encouraged me to see my voice, to use it to stand up for myself, and reminded me that it's okay if people don't agree with me or even like me, and if they don't, that's on them, so thank you. John Hutton, my birthday twin, John Hutton, you taught me that having the right people makes all the difference. And if you take care of your people, they'll take care of you. Sorry, turn page. Thomas, who's not here tonight, I have to say, I feel like we've grown up together in this organization through bosses, council members, and coworkers who've come and gone through the years, through it all, especially through the pandemic. You've been someone I could trust and count on to help me figure out whatever new problem I had in front of me. And to my staff and my staff-adjacent team here, Katie, Anna, Serena, Amy, Jerry Lynn, and Jennifer, I feel so lucky to have worked with you. I'm proud of the work that we've done to support the council and the community. I hope the future of the Clerk's Office continues to uphold the high level of service. I'm almost done. Life has a way of nudging us in new directions, and I've learned that knowing when to make a positive change for myself is just as important as knowing when to hold on. I leave with nothing but gratitude for the laughter, the long days, the friendships that will last long beyond my final meeting. Federal Way will always be a part of me. Thank you for allowing me to grow up here, to serve here, and be a part of the city's story. I'll always be cheering on this community, maybe not from the dais, but definitely from the sidelines and quite likely from a Zoom link. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you for everybody who came and supported me tonight. I really appreciate it. I wasn't going to talk about where I was going, but I accepted the Chief Clerk to Pierce County Council. So, I start there on the 31st, and I'm very excited to learn something new. It's very legislative-heavy, and I'm just excited for new opportunities. And just truly thank everybody on the council for all your support, and Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Well, we're going to take a brief recess. Why don't we say about 10 to, between 10 to 15 minutes, we're going to have, we've got cake in the back. Stephanie, we've got some cake for you, just the kind you like. So, we'll be in recess for that purpose, everybody. Thank you so much.
You might ask if the council wants anything to say to Stephanie.
All right, everybody, before we get back to business, council, is there, we went right to the reception. Is there anything that the council members would like to say about, or to Stephanie? Actually, Councilmember W., can you move that? I can never see your microphone. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. So, I'm going to read what a city clerk is. A city clerk is a municipal official responsible for managing records, ensuring compliance with laws, overseeing elections, and providing administrative support to the city council and other officials acting as a liaison between the public and the government. But a city clerk is much more than that. I see the city clerk as one of the most important positions in the city hall because the city clerk many times keeps us out of legal trouble by managing public records, by managing the council in many ways that the public doesn't see. And Stephanie did an amazing job. She not only managed us and helped us make sure that we did things that were proper, but she supported us, and she cared for us. And you don't always have that. So, this is a big loss to the City of Federal Way, and I know she'll be very successful in her new position, and I wish her all the best of luck, and we will really miss you. I appreciate everything you did. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, I just wanted to open up the, it is going to take us a while. I'm in denial, and it's going to take us a while, but we really wish you the best, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
All right, thank you. Okay, with that, now we are on to Mayor's emerging issues.
I had my hand raised, Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Sethad Dawson.
Thank you. Hi, Stephanie. Just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done for us. I really, I know I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss sitting by you, and like I said, just listening to you read those ordinances and be so proficient and excellent at it. I appreciate it and appreciate how hard you've worked for our city. When you were understaffed, things went as always, like nothing was missing, but you still managed to continue doing the work that you do and so efficiently. And to us, it looked effortless, but I'm sure you've had a lot of long hours to make those things happen. And so, thank you for all of that. Thank you for how you really made us look good. I appreciate that, and I know they have a good person coming to Pierce County, and so, don't forget about us. And every now and then, I'd love for you to come visit. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
All right, all right, thank you. Okay, now, time for Mayor's emerging issues and report. All right, last week, on Sunday, we flew into Washington, DC, and started meetings with the National League of Cities. And by we, we've got five members of the city council that were present. Councilmember McDaniel, Councilmember Sethad Dawson, Councilmember Honda, Council President Coachmar, and Councilmember Jack Walsh. There, we were on the, right to the left is our delegation there. The picture to the right was in Congressman Adam Smith's office, right to the left of me right there in his office. We had a great conversation that related to asks that we had before him and quite a number of other issues. We're very fortunate. Congressman Adam Smith has been a great advocate for our community. He's also the ranking member on the House Armed Services Committee, so we got to ask him some questions about we got to ask him some questions about Ukraine and some of those negotiations and just other hotspots in the world. And he was very informative and spent quite a bit of time with us. So we had a good opportunity to speak with him then. All right. Oh, let's go back a step. The National League of Cities was a great, we probably, there were probably several thousand council members from every corner of the country. And it was a great opportunity to hear from people in the federal government in different parts of the country and to share ideas about ways to address common issues. And so, it is, it is absolutely amazing how many people fill that conference room and just the different people that you meet. All right, next. Okay, then we had, on Friday, March 7th, we had the Communities and Schools Annual Fundraiser at Evergreen Middle School. That was a great event. David Harris and I are in that picture to the far left. And then, the Amalgamated Transit Union, ATU 587, held a press conference regarding the Transit Safety and Security Task Force. And that was on March 7th. That was at ATU 587's headquarters in Tukwila. You could see there, we've got Claudia Valgiucci, the, one of the King County council members. And then we had the mayor of Seattle, Bruce Harrell. There was another, the most recently appointed county council member was, is in the picture as well. I said a few words at the press conference, talking about, you know, the need to make sure that there's good lines and reliable lines of communications and expectations in regard to when incidents occur on buses and trains, especially because we're about to have light rail come here. I believe it was back in December, we had a King County Metro bus driver that was murdered, and just a tragedy. And ATU 587 is absolutely, as every leader in the region is, absolutely committed to making sure that their drivers are safe, that their riders are safe. It's my honor to be part of that task force. Our first meeting will be later this week on the 20th, and I'll be attending and saying a few words. And we've got good regional partners about this. And I've asked the chief to be a part of it as well. And he and I will both be there this Thursday, talking about ways that we can work better together to ensure the safety of the drivers. Then the next picture to the, to the far right is the Brookdale House ribbon cutting for the 25th wedding anniversary. That was on Friday, March 7th. As you could see, that was a big day. I think that was my third, third or fourth event that day. And it was a great event. It was a beautiful facility at Brookdale Foundation House. And my, Ron and Diane, my in-laws, Wendy's parents are there, and they were able to, they were able to see me try to cut the ribbon. We should have made sure the, it took about three or four tries, but nobody sharpened the scissors. But anyway, it was fun to see Ron and Diane there, and they absolutely love it there. 25 years that that place has been operating, and really is one of the great locations for senior assisted living in our community. And I can't believe, and one of the things I talked about was all the times that we as a council or myself or members of the community gather at that location. It's just a really beautiful location. All right, next. All right, also, recent community events. We had Meet the Mayors. The American Association of University Women, the AAUW, had a branch meeting, their Federal Way branch meeting, at Christ Lutheran Church on Saturday, March 8th. And that is myself and Des Moines Mayor Tracy Buxton. And we were talking about, they actually had us flip a coin on who was going to get, who was going to go first. And speaking of our respective issues, it was absolutely a full room, good discussion. And Mayor Buxton is a great partner, as is the local government in Des Moines. And we had a, we had a good Saturday morning for that. And then just yesterday, thanks to Craig Patrick, we had a great, and also thank you to Thomas and, and facilities and everybody else who helped out and make the St. Patrick's Day flag raising at City Hall yesterday a total success. Thank you very much to everybody who attended that. That was a lot of fun. And we had Steve Groom played, played bagpipes, and it was great to see and hear that. Thank you very much. Neil Hubbard was there as well, and did, we kind of had dueling bagpipes. And that was kind of fun. And then, earlier today, I did some reading to some 7th and 8th graders. Actually, it was 7th and 8th graders and 5th graders. I, I read to the 5th graders first, and then the next class were a combined group of 7th and 8th graders at St. Vincent de Paul just earlier today at that school. A lot of great questions, really great students, the 5th graders. I happened to mention that I could name all the US presidents in order by year, and they said, do it. And so, it's one thing to say you can do something, and then I was able to follow through, and it was kind of fun. But it was right to the very end before the bell told. So, it was kind of fun. Okay, next. All right, we've got, and I'm sure our council members are going to be talking about this, Coffee and Conversation with the Federal Way City Council, and the Federal Way School Board on Saturday, March 22nd, 10:00 a.m. to noon at Ebony and Ivory Coffee, right there off Warehouse Way South. Next. We've got the Diaper Drive, Saturday, March 22nd at 10:00 a.m. We'll be gathering, council and myself will be gathering at 9:30 at Fred Meyer, so we can grab a quick picture and make sure we get that out on social media, so people are aware that we're continuing our commitment to the Diaper Drive. Again, Fred Meyer, Twin Lakes, Saturday, March 22nd. It'll officially start at 10:00 a.m. And then we've got Parks Appreciation Day, April 26th, 9:00 a.m. to noon at Brooklake, Blueberry Farms, Steel Lake Annex, and Celebration Park. All right, and that concludes my report. And now, for the most important part of the meeting, is public comment. Everybody's got three minutes. Green means go. Yellow means you've got 30 seconds. Red means please stop. I really don't like to interrupt people. Everyone knows the rules. The rules are on the sheets. And I think we'll just keep it at that. Oh, the council did, a couple of years ago, make a point of making, just asking folks who come and testify and speak before the council, just let us know what community you live in. We don't need your address. We've already, in large part, sometimes we get them on these. Why don't I name the first few, and we'll have you queue toward the back of the room. First, we have Ken Blevins, then Holly Borso, Anna Patrick, Amy Beho, and then Kim Papini, and then Lana Bostick. All right, Mr. Blevins.
Mayor, council, thanks for listening to my comments. Ken Blevins, citizen of Federal Way for 52 years. And I just want to let you guys know, I appreciate this meeting that we had before this about the health through housing. I wish we had more of those because it seems like there's not very much, much communication going on, or at least not enough communication going from the, the city to the council. And I think we could probably improve on that, it sounds like. But the good questions, I think it seemed like King County was very, not very well prepared. It's like someone might have left their homework at home or their goods at home to not be able to answer some of the questions. That you should be able to have a portfolio to be able to explain these things to you guys, for sure. The Urban League, I mean, it seems promising, at least. They seem like their heart's in it. They've done it, looks like, in other places. I don't know how successful. Mostly, what King County has said that is, health through housing has been successful, that's not true. It's a lie. So it's not successful. It's 5% is actually all of health through housing, when you're talking about what the, why, what's success. So success, in my plan, or my opinion, would be, first of all, the state of Washington should have had a plan. They, King County shouldn't even gotten the money unless they had a real plan on what was going on. They're just basically throwing money at things. They're backwards. We have a, a day center that has no shelter, so that's messed up. So, I mean, you have people coming from all over daily into Federal Way and no place for the, the place that's supposed to help them, to give them help. There's no help for these people, not actual drug addicts. So if they were able to give them a shelter, a place and shelter, whether it's where they're at, which could be the next plan, that's great. Then they could be there, then they can actually, you know, let Urban League know, hey, we got some people here that I think that you might be, want to talk to. They can fill out an application. We can transition you over there. And then they can get them, use more help, and then they can go on to transitional housing elsewhere and job training and so on. So, no plan, just a lot of money thrown about there. And Federal Way gets to get stuck in the middle of it. What I really wanted to tell them is that if you actually ask, let people know what the truth was and what was going on, and the fact that King County didn't even want to mention addiction the first time we met them, first bunch of times they didn't even want to mention it, that, that we were going to get stuck four years later with nothing. And just the, still the same mess that, luckily, we have a great police department and a council that's, that's dedicated to the city on, you know, fighting for us and making sure that there, that there are steps that these guys have to go through. And if we're forced, if it's forced on us, which, if we had a vote, most people, if they knew the truth, they'd say, no, we don't want it. We want to help people. We don't want a mess in Federal Way. So, but thanks very much, and let's keep working on it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Holly Borso.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and give some brief remarks. My name's Holly Borso. I work for Telecare Corporation, and we are provider of behavioral health services here in Washington. We have 17 programs, including the King County ENT here in Federal Way, which we opened in 2017 after starting building in 2015. We are here just to express to you that we are also interested in putting in a proposal for the Community Crisis Care Initiative. We have put in an offer on the building that's located over on 333rd. I know that you heard last time from another behavioral health provider, but we wanted to make sure that you understood that you're able to move forward with requesting a facility like this in your community without limiting yourself to just one provider. The letter of intent that partners are looking for is simply that you're willing to look into this. You're willing to work with us. And so, you might see even other providers coming forward. There is a deadline coming up rapidly, however, without having a facility truly in our ownership, the only piece we have to provide at this time is just that we've started conversations with our community. So we hope that you'll keep an open mind, and I'm happy to come in and present a more thorough presentation for you when you have time on your agenda. This one was already booked up by the time you had gone to your last council meeting. So, thank you so much. Just want to make sure that you understand you don't have to commit to one single provider. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Anna Patrick.
Evening, Mayor and Council, and public. So, I'm going to talk about health through housing, and just have some questions for that, that I'm hoping that on record, others are listening and will hopefully be able to answer some of these hard questions. Specifically, as I was listening, I had some concerns about criminal records expungement. Years ago, our state senator seemed to know about this housing, and she is really known for, and all of our reps really are known for trying to get records sealed, diversion programs in place, sweep crimes under the rug, that sort of thing. So I have big concerns about that. Community engagement, getting people to come out and get people voted in. I worry that this is going to turn into a vicious cycle in Federal Way of getting the same people elected that are creating problems here in Federal Way. And those are the laws that are being put in place that really aren't beneficial for victims of crimes and the community at large. And so, I have a couple of other questions. If the facility serves individuals from outside Federal Way, how will we prevent our community from bearing the disproportionate burden, given that the city of Federal Way has already taken on a disproportionate amount of tax-exempt housing of the lower income bracket, voucher holders, and diversion programs in general? So, we are already taking on a lot. Our tax base is one of the smallest. And how are we going to ensure that we're not going to be, that this should be fairly distributed across, not only just King County, but the state at large? And how does King County plan to fairly distribute the housing diversion and public safety issues across all cities? Seems to be we're the go-to place for a lot of this. Still, what safeguards are in place to prevent crime, drug use, and disturbances from affecting nearby schools, low-income housing, and our downtown area as we work to attract businesses and improve public safety? The mention of putting bars over fire extinguishers, taking out rugs, which might be safeguards against drug activity in the hotels. What are we going to do? What are the criteria for shutting these down? That's one of the questions that I would ask, that you guys really securely define. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Beho.
Hi, my name's Amy Beho. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. So good to have all that information presented to me. I had a lot of concerns, and thank you for voicing some of those about what level of criminals and how we, what kind of criteria is going to be able to really bring these residents in. So, bottom line, I had all these questions about the criteria. And I would like to be part of that committee for the Rules of Conduct, to meet with the operations and to find out what's really going on. I worked at a rescue mission. I've been in five different trades and 20 years as a public school teacher. So I have quite of a diverse background to bring, to be a problem solver. My main concerns are going to be about the level of sex offenders that are going to be allowed. The children, are they allowed on the premises? Is this gate going to be closed and monitored? I mean, I had a lot of questions. And I think they all would fall under that Code of Conduct agreement that needs to be compiled and brought together in unity, so we're all having a voice here. Another thing, I know that deaths, deaths have been reported at these places. I don't have any statistics or research or data, so I have a lot of questions about that. Another thing I noticed is that the Urban League didn't look like it was a colored blind operation to me. And that is a concern to me, because I am sure there's a lot of white homeless people out there that could benefit from these services. So, transparency, I think it's really important. I like accountability and transparency, and especially, one of the council members mentioned, a monthly burn rate, and to hold them in account. If we're going to put down an expectation of what that looks like, then to have a measurement in place, because we know all goals are SMART goals, right? Yes, you remember the acronym for that. So, one of the side effects of having these kind of places are criminal activity, and it, like, he mentioned, well, one of the successes was not having overnight stays in a hospital. That's a little scary to me for success. So, I'm sure that my tax dollars are paying for hospital visits, extra police time, and also counseling services. Anyways, thank you for your time today. I appreciate, and it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Papini.
Good evening, council. My name is Kim Papini. I've been a resident here in Federal Way since 2016. I have other members of my family that have lived here since 1935, for 35 years. I'm here tonight to ask you to please vote no on the Connections Health Solution proposal that will be presented to you later. I have been looking into this since hearing the proposal at last meeting, and I am convinced this is a very bad idea for Federal Way community. While there are many reasons why I believe this would be very bad for our community, due to the limited time, I'm just going to do three. First, the facility, if you put in this community, will affect our public safety. The Kirkland facility that the presenters of the proposal used as their example is very different than the facility that they're proposing here in Federal Way. The Kirkland facility does not sit at the end of a public transit light rail. Kirkland, unlike Federal Way, is not well-known for its drug and crime problem. The Kirkland facility is tucked up in an area that is not easily accessible to the public. But even with these differences from the facility proposed here in Federal Way, I have learned that within just a few months of the Kirkland facility opening, the Kirkland police have seen an increase in calls to the Kirkland facility and the area surrounding the facility. This shows that Federal Way's already burdened police force will be extra burdened in the increase of calls, and also that this kind of facility does not create a safety issue, too. This will be South King County facility. This will be South King County facility. The patients it will be receiving will be from all of South King County, potentially bringing South King County's crime and drug elements to federal way's community. Let me remind you that that includes some of this area's largest homeless and drug problems like Kent, Renton, Auburn, and Des Moines. The facility will only be able to retain the patients for twenty-three hours and then they must be released into our community. In the proposal given, the federal way council, it was said that the facility will be responsible for making sure these patients would be returned to the proper place they came from. Well, I find that very hard to believe as every patient has the right to refuse service and not comply with the facility or even change our destination once they leave. Lastly, it will be a drain on our resources. This location may be good for King County, but it is not good for the community of federal way. Our police, public employees, the people and businesses located around it will all be taxed with the burden of handling the financial and time drain this facility will consume. There are not adequate research or history on this facility. Eight months is not long enough to know what will really happen. Federal way should not be the guinea pig for the potential dangerous and expensive experiment. Please, please vote no. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Lana Bostic. Then Jeffrey Tancredi and Gloria Butts.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Lana Bostic and I have lived in federal way since nineteen eighty-one. I am also the chairman, the chair of the Senior Advisory Commission and I'm speaking tonight just as myself and not as part of the commission. I'm here to ask you to approve the Connections Health Solution Crisis Center to open in federal way. When I read this article, I was surprised to hear that it had been initially started three years ago and then something happened and it got put on hold. I'm not exactly sure why that happened. It didn't say in the article. But I think that this is something that we, we really, really need. In federal way right now, we only have one day center that is open Monday through Friday. It doesn't serve enough people. We are the only city that has not have any sort of crisis center as of this time. And I think that it's time that we need to move forward with that. It seems to me like after I read the article about it, that it's really a no-brainer that we need to have this and that you should pass it. So I've been an advocate for homeless people for a long time. I don't think that what we're doing for people right now is adequate and I'm just hoping that you will do the right decision and the right thing for federal way and approve this. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Lana. Jeffrey Tancredi.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, and Council Members in the public. Jeff Tancredi, West Campus Area, Federal Way. So yes, Mayor, thanks for letting me speak tonight. Just to, just want to say thanks for the Urban League, cautiously optimistic, appreciate their presentation. A couple of concerns that I have. This hotel with, for the homeless drug addicts could increase the number of nine-one-one calls. So it's going to tax the city a little bit more. These are non-tax-paying citizens, so they're going to be using these services. Could, you know, affect the regular public when they call to request emergency assistance. Children, will they be brought in to where they could be sex offenders in the, in the hotel? Are there going to be sex offenders allowed in there? And if there is, if children can come in there, they could be subjected to illicit drugs and predator. Do the addicts have to abide by the state laws? Fentanyl, fentanyl is a felony at the federal level and it's a gross misdemeanor at the state level. So will they be arrested because it's, it's against the law to use fentanyl and other illicit drugs? They're bringing in the influence of drug and gang activity to federal way. It's a very big possibility. Crime could conceivably go up. You're providing a location for people to use drugs. The hotel could possibly draw more addicts. The hotel could just really affect our city overall in a negative way. Housing values could go down. Mirror Lake, the Mirror Lake neighborhood, one of the older neighborhoods of federal way, is right up against the back of the, of the hotel. The Muslim community has told me they're concerned about the drug addicts panhandling. And then again, the sex offenders, a sex offender supposed to register with the state, is the public going to know? I'm just remembering my days as an immigration officer, we had access to a database that, you know, so the public should be able to know, I mean, I don't have access to it now, but the public should be able to know if there's a sex offender in that facility. And then if they're able to bring children, how do you separate that out? So I know in this state, the laws are, you know, they're very lenient on sex offenders, but that's a serious thing. So anyway, thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeffrey. We'll look into some of those questions. Chief, let's, let's make sure we have a conversation about the sex offender registration requirements and Keith as well. And Brian, let's make sure we touch base on that. Gloria Butts. And then Mike Dickinson.
My name is Gloria and I've been a resident of federal way for twenty-some years. I had a run-in with different police officers and I just learned how to come to city council and complain. So this officer is R. Franco, number one-eight-eight, I guess it's his number, and his police report is completely false and he filed this. This incident happened back in two thousand twenty-two. It just resurfaced the end of twenty-four, going into twenty-five. Officer Franco indicated that he didn't speak to me. I spoke to Officer Franco after this incident. I gave him correct information. If he would have used the information that I gave him, this situation would have been taken care of in two thousand twenty-two instead of resurfacing in two thousand twenty-four. He also, well, he stated that he never talked to me. Actually, he did. Retrieving my phone bills from two thousand twenty-two to indicate that he did call me and we did speak. So the lies that he told and what he placed in his police report have affected me. So I'm just here to let you guys know that this officer is not a good officer and he needs to be investigated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butts. We've got deputy chief of police in the back of the room. He will make contact with you shortly after, after you leave the podium. And we've got your contact information, but he'll get it as well for, for you to pursue some sort of service delivery.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Dickinson.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I'm Mike Dickinson. I've lived in federal way since eighty-five and I appreciate being able to talk. I don't normally do that, so I'm a little nervous, but about this extended stay hotel being taken over, I have some serious questions. I really like the questions that you were giving the representatives that were making their presentation. Myself, that I feel that there has to be some sort of timetable for the stay there. And they seem not to have any kind of, you know, litmus tests that people have to take, no drug testing, no requirements at all. And the problem that I see happening in the future, I mean, like the example they were giving us for the facility that's already open that was there for two years, then four people moved out for whatever reason, they replaced them with four new people, but that seems so permanent. And that's fine if it's really working, that's a great thing, everybody has to pay for it, yeah. But what's going to happen two years from the, from now when we have a whole new group that needs to be in there? We need more, you know, if there's not a system where people are moving their way out or on their way out, no timetable, then we're just going to have to keep building new hotels over and over and over again because the problem is only getting worse. As much money as the county, the state, you know, probably the city that they're putting into this, year after year, the millions of dollars, it's just getting churned and the problem is just getting worse. So, you know, if you don't have a plan to get people moving into a system, how are you going to put the people that really want the system when there's no room for them? What are you going to do? Just say, well, we can't put you into a place because these people have been living here for ten years. Just doesn't make sense. So that's my beef.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Archie Levine.
My name is Archie Levine and I've been a state-licensed mental health counselor for more than twenty years and I've been providing mental health services in the state since nineteen ninety-six. I'm here representing Sound Alliance. We are a community organization made up of twenty-three faith, labor, health, education, and community organizations primarily located in Seattle and South King County. I'm a member of the mental health team in Sound Alliance and we've been focused on the crisis care centers since the King County Council proposed the levy in two thousand twenty-three. We mobilized the Sound Alliance membership to organize around getting the levy passed and we are in full support of one of the crisis care centers being cited at the facility in federal way. We held numerous listening sessions over the last couple of years with hundreds of people, professionals and, professionals in behavioral, the behavioral health field, and people dependent on their services. We've been told repeatedly that there is a severe shortage of providers and services because the work they do is undervalued and underpaid. One of our concerns is that Connections Health is new to our state. We are just getting to know them, so we can't comment on them as being operators of the facility. It is our hope that Connections Health can work with labor partners to ensure that the facility in Kirkland and this facility, if they do get the contract to run it, are fully staffed with well-paid employees so that they can provide the best service possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Harold Booker Jr.
Just wanted to make a few comments. I've been a resident in federal way for sixty years in the Dash Point neighborhood now. I don't know about Connections. I saw their presentation last week. Good thing. The, the service, that service is deeply in crisis. It is needed. Now, are they the right operators? That is something that needs to study. That is homelessness has a mosaic, a mosaic to solve. To the best of my knowledge, the city of federal way's plan was developed five years ago and hasn't been updated. We have to constantly review the plan, review how it is working, and how we adjust it to today's environment. Not only is our environment very different than it was five years ago, the future environment for the next four to five years with changes in our national policies, et cetera, is going to take people that are at the lower end of the world and they're hanging on by their fingernails. That is going to create a larger challenge and problem. So having a consistently reviewed, measured, and then updated plan to address the situation is really the only way not to be totally reactive. Reactive is not a plan. I appreciate that the council is speaking about this, thinking about it, and contemplating it, but presentations, the work is done in the background. You got to figure out the work in the background and then we report. And I've been spending two weeks trying to understand what the plan is and where we are, and it has been challenging to figure that out. Because really, we have to review, understand the metrics, understand what metrics are important to us as a community, and then instill in the code of conduct that we want, that we believe is appropriate for our community, and make the providers match our standards. But again, it's that mosaic. There is no one solution that is going to assist with homelessness. Everyone has to have, each individual has to be treated as an individual and find the right solution to help them move on from where they are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Juan Juarez Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kuchmar, members of the council. I just got here from Olympia. I was definitely going the legal limit of the speed limit, a hundred percent.
Just to be clear, Chief.
Yeah, just to be clear. I reside in one-two-three Sesame Street. My great neighbor, you might know him, his name's Elmo, he's a good guy. I also go drive by towards Military Road South where, as you know, working from Olympia, you had to wear suits, ties, shirts, and someone big like me, I get sweaty. So I tend to get my shirts, suits, and ties dirty. So I have to go to my local dry cleaners, King's Cleaners, in Military Road South and I get them clean. She's right behind a seven-eleven and right in front of a laundry mat, right across the street from Walgreens, tire place, neighborhoods. It's a good, it's a great location if you think about it, but yet there's unfortunate issues that she has to deal with every single day. And it's the homeless. Homeless people tend to sleep under her little area on her roofs during the rainy nights. Every time I visit her, I ask her, how's the crime here? How's the homeless issues here? And she says, no matter how many times she's called the police, they always come back. One time, they threw a rock at her window at midnight to see if they can steal money from her register. Thankfully, she went to the bank that night and they didn't take anything, just some shirts from the dry cleaner row. My one time, I went there and dropped off some suits and I saw some homeless people hanging outside on the side and I let the vendor know and she said, not again? Are you serious? I just called them to leave again an hour ago. They keep coming back regardless. I asked her if there's anything she wants to hear from the city council or what actions she wants to see and she says that she wants more police activity and more accountability toward these homeless people. But she doesn't have the time to come here and complain because she's too busy. Neither did I have the time. I had to skip a meeting, skip a few projects, which I'm a hundred percent going to get in trouble for tomorrow morning, but I care for her and I care for members of the community. So after going, again, a hundred percent the legal limit of the, of the speed, I'm here to advocate for her on behalf of King's Cleaners to please have more police activity there. Thank you again, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kuchmar, members of the Thank you again, Mayor Farrow, Council President Kuchmar, members of the council, and congratulations, Stephanie, on your new job in Pierce County. I'm sure they're looking to have you. Thank you.
Juan, thank you very much. Would you, would you please provide to the deputy chief of police, Kyle Sumter, in the back of the room, the name of the business, the name of the business owner, and we'll get special operations out there tomorrow. Thank you very much. All right, are there any more pink sheets? All right, that concludes, is there anybody online? Okay. All right. Now, we are on to council committee and regional committee reports. We are Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee, and Council Member Walsh.
Yes, we did not meet for a committee meeting last week since we were in DC. Our next committee meeting will be April 8th, right here at 5:00. Also, just another reminder of the Parks Appreciation Day. I expect everybody to be, to be there on Saturday, the 26th. Did I say that right, John? John's not here. Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right. Land Use and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Doby.
Yeah, a couple things. Our next meeting is gonna be April 7th. I'm told it's gonna be a long one, so everybody bring their sleeping bags. And then, a lot of the things on the agenda tonight have come through, long land use, but I do have one question that doesn't have to be answered now, but in our meeting we had at the retreat, we, I think we came up with the solution to talk to Sound Transit, get an MOU, find out about the other properties. I haven't heard anything back from anybody, so I'd really like to know how that process is going and what's happened, and have they communicated? Have we communicated with them? Are we close to an MOU? So, that's all I might report.
Ryan, can I answer it now?
Yeah. Yes, we have reached out to them. We have some high-level talking points that we are exchanging and drafting into a MOU that we can then have our respective boards or in this case, council approve, but we're still, we're kind of in the initial stages of, of the high-level bullet points. Thank you.
Okay, um, let's see here. Finance, Economic Development, Regional Affairs Committee, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting is going to be on March 25th at 5:00 PM in this room and is also available on Zoom. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Logic Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Asef Adosson.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting is for April 8th at 2:00 PM. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Regional Committees Report, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. For the council, AWC registration is open for the 2025 Legislative Session Recap webinar, which is going to be online on, I didn't put the date down, but it's, I will get that to you, that it is in May, I know that, and it is from 12 to 115. And they need us to register and I will get you the date. The annual conference is also open for registration, which is in Kennewick this year from June 24th to 27th. NLC is having a webinar, which we may be interested in, on May 14th from 3:00 to 4:00 PM, and it is titled, "How Police Departments Can Become Community Mental Health and Violence Prevention Leaders," and it's talking about the Rapid City, South Dakota Police Department and what they've done with public safety and mental health work. The NLC has a number of webinars that would be interested, interesting for probably many of us to listen to. I also wanted to talk about our skateboard meeting today. We met every, about three months, we meet in person because that's the only time we can take public comments is when we're in person. And we met today at Tech Willa City Hall. Thank you, Tech Willa, for hosting us today. But we had a talk from PSRC on funding from both the federal government and the state government, and it is concerning. Some cities at our meeting have already had some transportation projects put on hold because they don't have the funding available, and I don't know that that's happened with us, but it's happening to other local cities, so it might be happening to us in the near future. And they just encourage us to stay in touch with our legislators, both at the state and at the federal level, to tell them why we need that funding. They also, Metro is starting fare inspections again, so in the next couple of weeks, they will be making sure that if you get on a bus or the train or whatever, that you have paid. If you haven't, you'll be warned, and in May, they will actually start citing people. And this hasn't, you know, during COVID, that, that kind of went by the wayside, so that's starting up again. Tomorrow, the Regional Transit Committee is meeting and we will be talking about Metro research on safety and also about the fare inspection program that's on Zoom. You're welcome to attend from 3:00 to 4:30. And there's a, the Senior Commission, you know, meets every month, and we have, as a commission, have been very, very fortunate to have this support of Still Lake Presbyterian Church. And one of the pastors there, Colleen Chinon, is retiring and her, she's retiring actually next week, but she has been a friend of the Senior Commission since we started. Still Lake Presbyterian has provided quite a bit of financial support to the Senior Commission, and as someone who's involved with the Senior Commission, I'd like to say thank you very much for those of us here at the City of Federal Way. We have appreciated her input. She comes to every meeting, even though she's not a member of the commission. She has, she's just been, been pretty awesome to work with, and happy retirement to her. She certainly deserves a happy retirement, and she's done a lot of great work here in Federal Way with our seniors. And I had the opportunity to read at Camelot recently, to the pre-K program, and I read a book on dinosaurs, and it was fun, you know, three, they were three, four, and five, so they were quite spread out in their ages, but that was quite fun, and they've invited me back to come and read more books to them. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a reminder, the Federal Chamber CEO, Becca Martin, has invited both the mayor, myself, and Councilmember Honda to join in a Zoom meeting tomorrow at 11:30 to talk about economic development with their National Economic Development Consultants. So, we'll give you a report on that at our next meeting. A little recap from our National League of Cities Conference and visit with our Congressman, Adam Smith, and Senators Patty Murray and Senator Cantwell, Maria Cantwell. Just so you know, the 850,000 that had been allocated to the city, a lot of these federal money programs are, don't happen just one and done, it's a process. And so, the 850,000 that we were promised previously is done. It is, is for our downtown core, and it is ready to be dispersed, but some of the money in the federal programs are not being dispersed yet. So, we do know that it is coming to us, we just don't know exactly when. We have, Senator Patty Murray said that they put in the budget, her staff, that 1.2 million to help with our community center, and they had that in the last budget, it was taken out, but they're gonna put it in the next budget, so that's gonna be a couple-year process, but that's ongoing. And so, while we were there talking with them, we did talk about the day center, seeing if we couldn't move that over to the Red Lion, if that was possible, to find federal dollars for that. Would certainly be a better area for it, over in that area. And lastly, I just want to let you know that when we talk with some of our council members, when we go to some of these events, we do talk about neighboring cities, and some of you have asked about what's going on in Salties. And as far as I know right now, that's the City of Des Moines, and they are talking with the owner of Salties, who has it up for sale. The sale fell through that they had, apparently it's up for sale again. And so, I've asked them to talk with our mayor to see if we couldn't partner in some way because a lot of what happens down in the redound area affects our citizens because we go down there, and to see if there isn't something we couldn't partner with them to, you know, redevelop that area. So, anyway, if you all have any ideas, please be sure to let us know. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Item 7, Consent Agenda. These items have gone through committee action and been passed all at once. I'll read them and ask if a council member wants an item pulled for separate consideration. Item A, Minutes for the March 4, 2025 Regular and Special Meeting Minutes. B, Approval to Submit NPDES Annual Report and Management Plan. C, Goods and Services Agreement with Arlington Recycle Warehouse. D, 2025 Asphalt Overlay Program Bid Award. And E, South County Area Transportation Board. Council, are there any items you'd want pulled for separate consideration? All right. Councilmember, Council President Kuchmar.
I move approval of the Consent Agenda Items A through E.
Second.
Put a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Matters passed unanimously. Okay. Council Business. Item A, Resolution. Support of Connections Health Resolutions, RFP Proposal. That's the proposed resolution. We'll have a staff presentation from Ryan Call, our city attorney. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me pull this up real quick. Okay. So, tonight, we have a resolution that's in response to the discussion from the special meeting two weeks ago, the March 4th special meeting, where Connections Health Solutions was requesting council support or endorsement for their proposed RFP application, or the RFP application they're gonna submit, to build a crisis center for the South Sound, or the South King County area. So, originally, they were asking for you to sign a letter that they had drafted. The, the form of the endorsement that I proposed is a resolution. The, the letter was fine. It kind of verged into endorsement of a bunch of assertions that I didn't have time to vet, and it was their positions. This is, I does, I do think it fits the, the needs of, of the application process, which is that we, they showed demonstrated support of the permitting jurisdiction, so hopefully council likes the form of it. So, I'm just gonna go through two slides to show you the content of the resolution and then I will turn it over to you for discussion. So, the whereas section is quite short. It says, whereas King County soliciting proposals to provide a crisis care center is funded by a nine-year levy. The Connections Health Solutions proposed facility is located at 322 South 333rd Street. For context, that is currently vacant, I believe, a medical building that is directly adjacent to the community, the Federal Way Community Center, and across the street from the Federal Way School District Headquarters Building. I believe that it's attractive, and we heard tonight in public comment from another agency that's apparently also interested in that same building. I think it probably scores quite well for the application process, and that's probably why they've looked at it. Whereas Connections presented their proposal to the city council on March 4th and described how they would, the facility would operate, and whereas Connections has expressed an intent to be a good neighbor and work collaboratively, collaboratively with the city to address any impacts operation facility would occasion, and this is the therefore. As the jurisdiction responsible for permitting and land use determinations for 822 South 333rd Street, Federal Way, Washington, the City of Federal Way supports the development and operation of a regional crisis care center by Connections Health Center Solutions at the proposed site. So, that's the content of the resolution. The mayor's recommendation is that council not pass the draft resolution. I don't want to put words in the mayor's mouth. My understanding is the main two reasons are, one, its location is directly next to a fairly sensitive community use. We have sensitive, or, you know, children and elderly that use that building daily. During the summer, hundreds of children use that facility. And then, more importantly, I believe, is Federal Way continues to be the proposer actual site for these regional facilities that serve the entire South King County area. We heard a bunch of them tonight at the special meeting. This facility is still usable by the City of Federal Way, even if it's not cited in our city. So, I believe the city, the mayor's position is, you know, we've carried our fair share of the water, and this would work just as well somewhere else in the South Sound. So, that is the recommendation, that is the mayor's recommendation, and that is the resolution before council.
Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. I just have one question. When telecare came in several years ago, it wasn't considered an essential public facility, and the council had a discussion about it at land use. We, there, it came in because there, it was zone, it was in the right zoning, there wasn't anything we could do to stop it as it was an essential public facility. Can you tell us what the difference is now with this facility?
There is no difference. So, once again, tonight, this is a request for an endorsement from council, for an application to get a contract with King County. That's entirely discretionary to council. If, I should also point out that this is one criterion in a long list of selection criteria that the county will be looking at. It's unclear to me if this is disqualifying. If council declines to endorse Connections for this application, they very well may still get the contract. That said, the, the building is site, is, is zoned for this use. So, if they get the contract, regardless of what action council takes tonight, they, they can lawfully cite at that, at that location.
One of the questions that came up earlier tonight, or two weeks ago, was if somebody was dropped off here and, let's say they, by the Auburn Police Department, could we have a requirement that the Auburn Police Department, or, excuse me, comes, when, when the person is released and ready to go, comes in, takes that person back to Auburn? Is that something we could put in there?
I'm not sure how that would be structured. That would have to be in agreement with us in Auburn.
Well, but there's a, there's another factor that this person, if they were not under arrest, has no lawful obligation to get into a police car at all.
Correct. There's, there's multiple layers to that question. So, if someone's not under duress or, or under arrest, there's no color of law forcing them to do something, they can walk out the front door and do whatever they want. If they are under arrest, or say they're being detained for a mental, mental health evaluation, they're still under the jurisdiction of, of that police department. So, forcing another police department to do something is, is, would require an agreement with that police department.
But it would have no force in effect.
So, the bottom line is, even without a, a yes on this resolution, this facility could still be cited there?
Yes.
Thank you.
We just don't know whether it would be dispositive on the part of King County.
I just don't know how much of an impact this endorsement has on the scoring of their outreach.
I've been told that they wouldn't cite it without our endorsement. That's what I was told. Councilmember Walsh, Councilmember Doby, and then Councilmember McDaniel.
Not so much questions, but just comments. Two weeks ago, when the Connections came, from the presentation they gave, I was thinking, hey, this is, we should definitely do this. Fortunately, through the, through the process, it takes time, and time gives us the opportunity to get more information. And I now have some, some serious concerns similar to what the, the mayor had here. One is, our, our police department contacted the Kirkland Police Department to find out what the calls had been up there to their facility in Kirkland, and there'd been a considerable number of police calls there, which did not come out in the discussion two weeks ago. And, and with that, with the considerable amount of police calls, it means, shows that there's a problem, a challenge, and especially with it right next to the community center where there are children, I don't think that that is the place for, for that. And as you say, you know, our, something may still be cited there, but I, I don't think that it is wisdom that the, that the council supports that. And also, I mean, there are other organizations that want to, want to do it as well. And also, I mean, there are other organizations that want to do it as well. There's definitely a need for this type of program, without a doubt. I think there's a very great need for this type of program. But the location of it is my concern. And so, you know, when it comes to vote, I, in good conscience, I can't vote yes on this. As much as I support the concept of the program, I can't vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Doby?
Yeah, I have a question. Just to confirm, this site, regardless of how we vote, is cited for a service like this, correct?
I believe it's medical use, so it is zoned for this use.
Okay, so regardless if we vote up or down on this, it could be here, correct?
Correct.
Are there other sites in Federway that are zoned in such a way that another organization can say, I want to be, I don't know, next to Papay, or over by DBM? Or, I don't, I'm just throwing names out, but what other locations could a site, could this be cited at?
Anyone know the zoning map better than me?
Yeah, Keith?
One guy, too.
Yeah, medical offices are allowed pretty broadly in the city. So it'd be tough to say a specific site, but they could, Joe, go just about anywhere along the major corridors, and even into some of the neighboring business districts.
So this is not the only site somebody could choose? It's probably the best site, because it's already built out in some way, or somebody's made an investment, but that's why it's probably targeted, I'm guessing?
Yeah, or the existing facility and the sale price was attractive. I don't know.
Yeah, so they're doing this for, they're doing it for a contract and a business deal, and they want to help people, but there's more than just, I want to help people, probably, I'm guessing. So when the presentation was done the other day, we had one person that said, hey, this is what we want to do, and that was what we were talking about. But couldn't this resolution be broadened to say, anybody that wanted to bid on it? Because we can't stop somebody from bidding and being in Federway or South King County. We just want to be at the table, not like we've been with King County on all these hotels in the beginning, in the negotiation. I mean, could we, the resolution be changed to anybody, not just a specific name?
Well, the resolution is requested by the organization. It's the only reason it's on the...
I understand that, Mayor, Jim. But I mean, a resolution to one individual who came to us may not be the wisest thing to do. But a resolution to say Federway recognizes this kind of service is important, and we are open to it, but we want to be at the negotiating table on what gets done, like Susan says, can we say you have to get an Uber to take them back? That's part of the deal if you're in Federway. Not a police car, but a transportation method, or some other things that we would ask for to be, so they'd be good neighbors. So I'm asking that question kind of philosophically, but I'm not for a resolution that says one person, just because they came here and asked for it, but I'm not opposed to a resolution that says Federway is open for 170 new jobs, and a new facility, and something that helps people. Because I don't believe this is just homeless-oriented. This is more mental health. This is anybody and everybody, and our 100,000, 3,000 people live, plus the 80,000 in Auburn. It's a viable business that you'd want in your city, I believe. So I'm asking, then the resolution, can it be broadened?
Probably not. So the deadline for this application is in three days. So we won't be meeting again before that. Additionally, the endorsement, or the, I guess, demonstrated support is more aimed at the site. It's the building that's been chosen, and that the jurisdiction supports, I guess, both the operator and that site. So I could foresee a situation where we don't agree with the site, or we don't agree with the person that's proposing it. So I don't believe that a blanket, kind of, we're open for business for this type of thing, would be easily craftable.
What happens if five people show up and say, I'm bidding on this, and I want that site? Then King County picks one of the five wins? We really don't have any say if they, we're going to go there or not, is that correct?
We do have a say. We can say we don't want this particular company.
No, I got this, but we vote no on this resolution, which I actually think we should, without naming a person, I'd vote for it, but we vote this down, all we're doing is voting down a name, and five people could put in their bid at King County and pick that site, and whoever King County picks could go there. Is that my understanding?
I don't know. I mean, the mayor said that the endorsement from the jurisdiction is important to the county.
Yeah, but it's not...
So the only people that have asked for this endorsement is Connections. So if you do, if council declines to endorse Connections, there will be no endorsements of anybody.
Got it. No endorsement, but anybody could go there if they got chosen and they picked that site.
If they have their own funding, yep.
So we really don't have any say over what happens there?
Well, I just, just to clarify, Mayor, council has say. I mean, council can rezone where medical uses can be in the city, but beyond that...
Yeah, I got it.
Right?
I was just going to chime in on your question, Councilmember Doby.
Yeah, thank you.
I think in this case, the mayor wanted the council and the public to hear this. Normally, this is not something that requires council action to basically sign off on an application to say, yes, this is compatible with the existing land uses of the city, and therefore, we're not against it, kind of thing. That's something that he could do. And so if there's five people that come here, and we don't, the mayor doesn't want to bring this before the people, that's something that he could do, and it'd be equal to all five people. But he felt it was important for everyone to hear this, and so I think doing that for five people might be a little cumbersome for a council meeting.
Right. In all fairness, if we don't recommend one person who just came forward to us, all five could bid for this, and somebody could be here. I just want to make sure I understand that, because, that, you're understanding, Jim?
My impression is that they were not going to put it in without our agreement. And that's why I didn't feel it was appropriate for me, just to make a unilateral decision.
And I agree with you. I agree with you. I don't disagree. I'm just trying to understand.
Right?
Somebody could come anyway.
Is that...
Olivia and Kelly Ryder.
Why don't we, let's park that question. We've got Kelly Ryder on, we could call on her in a moment. Councilmember Sephard Austin, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do support the project, and I do support us moving forward. However, after hearing the one individual during the public comment, I think if we had more time, it would have been great to maybe endorse others, because we are interested in the facility being there. But I think at this point, it may be mute. So I kind of see where Councilmember Doby's going with this, and if there was a way around it, and we could support multiple agencies, so we get here, we get what we want, then it would be great. But I also understand that time is of essence, and so I'll go ahead and support what's on the docket here, so, thank you.
All right, and before we turn it over to Kelly Ryder, Councilmember McDaniel, you've been waiting patiently.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of questions. The first ones, I'm going to piggyback right on top of that. So there is no way to make a motion that the resolution is changed to be more generic? So that is not a legal possibility, is that what I'm understanding?
It's a legal possibility. I just, it won't serve the purpose that you guys are proposing.
Understood. I'm just trying to understand what, you know, the legal aspect of this is.
So...
Go.
It's drafted right now to specifically endorse Connections Healthcare at the address in the resolution.
No, I read through it. Luckily, it was only three pages. Made it pretty easy for me. I appreciate that. But like I said, when we had them first come, and then after that's when the emails came in, and then all the other conversations. And my concern on this one is going to be, not us approving or not approving this, is that facility is 90% move-in ready for this kind of treatment facility. I don't think King County cares what we do. That location's going to be the one they're going to choose. That's my personal belief system, just because of the finances and the fact that it's 90% ready to be moved in. It was designed for this. They ran out of money. It's sitting there waiting for someone to move into. So I have some, I just truly believe that's just how it's going to go. So we don't make a decision, we don't make a move to have at least some say in this, then I believe we're going to get whatever is chosen. And we've had that happen quite a few times, and I'm not a big fan of having other jurisdictions kind of push us around in that aspect. The second part I'm going to talk about is, I saw the email on the Kirkland Police, but I'll also point out, as you did in your email, they gave us three years, showing the increase in phone calls, when the agency had only been open for seven months. So we don't even have enough time to really know if the increases were massive, there were two that actual building, or buildings around it, and most of them were for health checks. So again, we don't even have the numbers of the, say, 150 phone calls, how many of them were actually, you know, check-ins, to make sure someone was okay versus violent activities or drug usage. So I can't really use that one in my mindset tonight for choosing. I do have a different question, and I don't know if this fits in. It's kind of like what we heard in the housing. Is there an operator license that's required if someone moves into that facility?
Not currently in code now.
Okay. And then, but it is code for the housing now?
For permanent supportive housing and emergency shelter, there's an operating license required.
Okay. Is that done through the city, or is that...
Yeah, we pass that into local code. You could potentially quickly pass something into local code for a crisis care facility, if that was what the council wanted.
Understood. And then my question on that one, is that a kill switch? Is there stuff written in the operator license that if there is something where the two, the city and that organization come through a lock, that it is like, done?
So we can revoke, so for permanent supportive housing and emergency shelter, we could revoke the operating license, which then means it cannot operate by code.
What are the requirements on that scenario? I know it'll be different for this, but I'm just trying to get a general idea in my mind.
It is being out of compliance with the things that are in code right now, and I don't have that specific list in front of me, council member. But basically, if they become, it's like any other code compliance issue. If you're out of compliance with the code, code compliance officer would serve that facility with a warning, a ticket, notice of violation, and ultimately revoking that operating license. So there would be a process to follow.
Is that what we did with the day center?
With the day center, yes. We issued a ticket for being out of compliance with city code for the overnight residents on the property.
Gotcha. And then does that have anything to do with the code of conduct of the operating licenses we talked about earlier? Does that have anything to do with those two?
The code of conduct is one piece of that operating license. And so if they were in violation of the code of conduct, that would give the city an opportunity to, at least, whether we issue a ticket or have a conversation with the operator, that gives us the leverage to do that.
Okay. Then I want to broaden the conversation a little bit tonight, where if we're going to move forward with this, then I would like to also talk about that operation license to be required for this, and have that kind of part of it. And then we just had a hotel, we had the HTH come in here, talk about their place. They said they were able to expand the, I guess, the intake of the places that could refer to them. If we're going to do this, there's no point in building the day center that has no place to send people who need treatment. There's no point in having a treatment facility if you have no housing for them to go to afterwards. So if we're going to do this, we need to look at it from a holistic point of view, and look at all the pieces, and if we don't have all the pieces in play, it makes zero sense to move forward. I'm in favor of giving people second chances and providing with opportunities. This location is not just a treatment facility. It's a timeout. It's for adults over 18. If you're having a mental issue, you need to go talk to somebody. You have somebody who's wanting, you know, just to get it out of your chest, or just because your day's too big. It's a place for that. So I do not have hesitance on that one. I would have preferred to have it more of an open, ticketed area, where it's, like you said, not one location. We could actually allow, say, we're open to the idea, to whatever facility or whatever operator wins the grant. But I would like to say, if we're going to do this, I want some teeth in it, and I would like to talk about that operator license and make that part of the conversation, too.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, what Councilmember McDaniel referred to as the crime stats, the calls to the facility in Kirkland, it was over three years. It did not, it was hard to show just what was from the Connections and what wasn't from Connections. But it's nebulous, but I don't want to make a decision endorsing something based on nebulous information. I think that if we were to, obviously, this is time-sensitive, and I don't think in the time that we have, we can sort out the true figures on that. And it's hard to undo something, so, anyway.
Chief, any input on, we've been talking about data. You provided that data in your position. Any thoughts on this?
Before I share the data with you, as your police chief, at times, I carry a significant burden in terms of public safety and keeping Federway residents safe. I have deep concerns about this particular facility and the location. This is a low-barrier facility for treating, you know, mental illness crisis center. We are going to become a regional location. There's 2.3 million people in King County, and there's going to be four facility, maybe five. There's going to be a tremendous draw for other jurisdictions, particularly police, to bring people who are in mental crisis to Federway. This location is next to our Federway Community Center. I mean, there's vulnerable population on a daily basis, and we are going to experience increase in calls of service at this location. Just to give you the numbers, at Connections Health Solutions, as of March 6 of 2025, we did a public disclosure request. They had 83 calls for service, 911 calls for police. If this number just carried out, averaged out, we're looking at 431 calls for service at this Connection facility. In 2024, they had 265 calls for service, which is up about 60 or so from the year before. Now, we don't know what the other facility was, but clearly, we're seeing a significant increase in calls for service. I can't dive into what those calls are. Most likely, they're welfare checks, that type of calls mainly. But nevertheless, this, you know, not often I speak out on policy decisions, but I can tell you, this will not be good for Federway, for public safety purposes. But ultimately, it's a policy decision, but I don't doubt that we are going to experience an increase in calls for service, and even other facilities. We've had escapes and issues in the past, so, yes, I am concerned.
Councilmember Honda, then Councilmember McDaniel.
Thank you. Can anyone tell me if, so Telecare, we got a list of their calls for service, thank you, chief? And there's a daycare center right next to Telecare, right next door. I believe they share a fence. Have any of the businesses there complained about that business being there? Have they had any issues? Have they had any concerns with it being there?
Difference with Telecare is they are a referral base. There's no people just being dropped off. The low-barrier facility we're talking about, 24/7, people can be dropped off, nobody gets turned away. With referral base, they're coming because of a court order, they're coming from Western State. But nevertheless, we've had, you know, people escape from that facility, creating a serious public safety issue. Now, it doesn't happen often, and they've improved their security measures, but we've had escape from that facility, even for Telecare. Now, there were somebody that sent an email saying, hey, Telecare doesn't have any issues, very low police calls for service, so why wouldn't this facility work? So we actually pulled the numbers, and even for Telecare, 2025, we've had 59 911 calls for service from that facility. And if we, and that's as of February 28 of 2025, projected to be 354 calls for service for the year, if that average continued. So there's already a police draw to this facility. I'm really concerned that the Connections Health Solutions, that type of facility, low-barrier, is going to create even higher calls for service.
Thank you. So my next question is, if this wasn't located in Federway, let's say it's located in Auburn or Kent, or Des Moines, some other city, would our police officers... Auburn or Kent or Des Moines, some other city, would our police officers take people there instead of to St. Francis? Because I recently had the opportunity to spend time at St. Francis on a Saturday from 10:00 PM to about 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM. When we got there, doctors were treating patients in the waiting room with IVs and medication. It was chaotic. It wasn't a good, it wasn't, as a nurse, it was horrible. I couldn't imagine being treated, being sick enough to go to the ER, being treated in the waiting room. And you've said in the past that our officers take people with a mental, you know, with a crisis, drug, alcohol, mental, to St. Francis. If this is an alternative to taking them to St. Francis, when St. Francis isn't going to do, be able to do very much for them, we need to look into that, because St. Francis is just going to release them, they're back on the street, and that's another police call eventually for that person. So, would our police officers actually take someone to Auburn if this facility was located in Auburn instead of to St. Francis?
Absolutely. We would take individuals to both facilities. Currently, we take people to St. Francis. What I could tell you is that outside community jurisdiction could bring somebody to St. Francis, somebody who's in a mental crisis, but generally, it doesn't happen. It's really more for Federal Way, but from time to time, it could happen. Maybe sometimes we'll go to Harborview with someone. But yes, if it's in Kent, Auburn, absolutely, we would take people in crisis to their jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Actually, Paul. Council President.
Thank you very much. So, you know, we seem to be concentrating on this one site, but this is an RFP for South King County, right, from the county?
Correct.
But it's not just for our site, it could be other sites.
Connections Health Solutions asked for.
I know, it's for that site in particular.
endorsement for that particular site.
But the RFP could be for other sites, maybe.
Anywhere in South.
So, the county could be looking at other sites, not just our site.
It will be cited somewhere in South King County, and if it's not Federal Way, it will be somewhere else.
I understand there is something in Auburn that they're looking at, a building. So, you know, I have concern, I'm a social worker from the Dark Ages, way back when, when people were hippies. That's how long ago, and believe me, that was very tame compared to today. But I was in mental hospitals, not personally, but worked, and I worked with general, you know, kids on drugs. They always say, what is it, is it, are they treating mental illness with the drug? Or is the drug causing the mental illness? I don't know, but it's scary, especially now with the strength of the drugs that they have. And now, I know that our ERs are where people are ending up, and there's no place to discharge them to. But my concern is, we're talking about health through housing at the extent of state, we're talking about Red Lion with overnight shelter. We've already got the day center and the issues there. We've already got Telecare with the issues there. Why on earth would we be looking at bringing more problems into Federal Way until we're prepared? We're only a city of 100,000 people. We can't, our police can't handle this until things, I mean, it would be really nice if the legislature would make drugs illegal again, that might be helpful, and people could get the help they need, because a lot of people don't get the help until they're forced to do that. So, I can't, I can't, I can't support this. I mean, I don't know why we would even do it, even consider it. Although, I love the Connections consultant, I'm very happy with that, but I, and I don't know why we would even be considering doing a letter in support of one facility when there will be others who will also, I mean, I think we need to be fair as a city. So, I'm going to be voting no.
All right. Councilmember McDaniel, then Councilmember Dovi.
Yeah.
Then we can hear from Kelly Rider.
I think I've been going almost two years now, and for two years, I hear this do something, this do something, this do something. You have a moment to do something. You guys can make changes to the, I can't remember his call right now, the resolution, he just told us that. So, it's not like we can't make changes. We have the ability to put teeth in this. So, if you guys want to kick it down the road, you can kick it down the road, that's cool, it's going to come right back to us. So, my question is, is, I understand where the chief's coming from, his main goal is safety, that's his main focus. Ours is changing lives. Ours is affecting the people who live in the city and the people who come to the city. So, I know that, well, this will be replacing the ER drop-offs. If right now, Chief, someone goes to the ER, do the police officers actually walk them in, or do they drop them off and tell them to go in?
Generally, we don't want to take them in a police car. We take, call an ambulance, fire department with their support. They're generally transported with medical personnel if they're in a crisis. But we can also drop them off if it's voluntary.
If you drop someone off at the ER and walk them in, who gets the bill?
Not the city.
It's not given to the city?
No. We do not get billed.
Okay. So, ER covers it, so we as a citizen still pay for that service anyways?
Medicaid, Medicare may kick in, but.
Taxpayer, so it's taxpayers.
Taxpayer money, but none to us.
Yeah. So, I'll go back to my original point, is we have the ability to make a change resolution, we have the ability to talk about putting some teeth behind this, we have the opportunity to do quite a few things. I'd rather us take the chance now, and while we have the people up here who can make the changes, make it happen. I don't think it's really going to matter what we vote or not vote for this thing. I still think, like I said, I'd even bet money on it, that's the location they're going to shoot for. It's cheaper to move in, and it's all about money. If it's 90% ready, that's 90% of your money you don't have to spend on getting it ready. So, that's all I'm going to say on this one, and I'm just ready to vote, and you guys are, too.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dovi?
Yeah. Chief, you said wellness check, 911 wellness checks, is that?
I meant welfare check.
Yeah, what is that? What's the definition of a welfare check?
It could be a simple 911 hang-up call.
What's that?
Hang-up call, for example, from the facility.
I see.
So, somebody will call 911, and maybe, generally, there's no emergency going on, but I know staff are calling, but also residents who are there also calling.
Are they usually calling from their cell phone, not a landline, I'm assuming, right?
I think many patients have access to phone, or from the facility or their own phone.
Councilmember, welfare checks is, if you've got someone in a parking lot that's screaming to themselves.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand. I heard that most of the calls were welfare checks, and I was not clear what a welfare check was.
Sure. Those are the prime, they're going to be the majority, significant number of calls, but staff are also calling for help from, you know, police to respond and assist. That happens as well.
And this is, when the last group that was going to do this building, I mean, did the city have any money in it? Did we fund it in any way or have anything?
We had nothing to do with it.
I was just curious.
Nothing. No, it was unfortunate that that got somehow imbued, that the city was involved and somehow we were not.
Okay. So, this was a entrepreneur who was going to build something, they got through it and ran out of money, and there it sits?
Yeah, they were on the verge of getting their permits, didn't they get their?
So, they got one permit, the second one expired. It was state, it was state money.
State money.
So, they got a state grant and ran out. They also got money to build a facility in Linwood, and it is shuttered. So, the money that went to RI, that has not resulted in operating facilities.
Okay, okay. I mean, and one last comment, I kind of tend, I think I tend to agree with Councilmember McDaniel's there, that I'm not, I'm not for saying, let's say, one company should be, we're going to back them, but we should be open to having something like this here. I don't, maybe I'm not correct, but I don't view this as a homeless place that people go. I think this is a mental crisis place, that somebody in a three-piece suit, or somebody in their blue collar, or their hard hat, or anybody's going to go when they're in need. So, we're focusing on calls to the police, and I understand they have them in Kirkland, but I think that's a smaller piece of it, the way I understand it, than the normal people are going to go to this thing. But, but anyway.
All right. We've got Councilmember Asafad Hassan.
Thank you, Mayor. I am surprised that we are willing to send people to Auburn or wherever facility there is, when we're not willing to, except when we're talking about health through housing or any other, I think that we talk about around homelessness, we say we don't want other people to come to our city, and yet, we're considering another location for Federal Way people to go to and asking the police chief if we will take them to Auburn facility. That's kind of puzzling to me. So, I'm saying, if, you know, we have this opportunity, I think it should be in Federal Way, if King County chooses Federal Way. But I think we need to be very mindful of how we treat people, and we're, again, we're, you know, what if Auburn says they don't want Federal Way, people who need service from Federal Way to not come there? So, I think we just need to examine how we look at what happens to our Federal Way people, but I'm going to support this, I'm going to support the bill, I'm sorry, for us to sign that letter, the resolution, thank you so much. And, yeah, that, I think, like Councilmember Paul said, here's an opportunity for us to really say we're going to help our residents or people who are in need, when we're trying to pass it on to another city and not sign this letter. I don't understand what we're doing. And so, hopefully, we all agree to do something to help our people and just make it so that they can be served, otherwise, it doesn't make sense to me, so, but, thank you.
All right. Kelly Rider, I'm sorry. What did you?
No, she can go first.
Kelly, have you been, Kelly Rider, are you on this call?
I am, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can you tell us what your understanding is of the importance or the, you know, there's been some debate, you've been probably listening to the debate, would a provider get selected if they did not have the jurisdictional support letter? Is that possible?
Mayor, could we introduce Ms. Rider?
Yes. She was here for the study session, and she is the director, Kelly Rider is the King County Director of Community and Human Services, and she was here earlier tonight, so, on the study session. All right, Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening again, members of the council. I'm sorry that my video isn't working, I popped home to put kids to bed, but just wanted to be here for specific questions like that, Mr. Mayor. I have no interest in encouraging the council to pass any resolution tonight, I really am only here to be able to support any kind of fact information sharing that is helpful to the council. To that question, Mr. Mayor, in this specific procurement process, King County has committed that we will not fund any sites that do not have the support of the city jurisdiction where it would be cited. Now, that can be done in a couple of different ways. As you all are considering tonight, a city can express proactive support through a letter that goes in with an applicant application. That's what the procurement process asks for applicants to do. If no applicant for a zone has a letter expressing city support for that operator and site, then we would proactively, as King County, reach out to that city to identify whether support exists. And ultimately, if in this procurement round, a city does not support an application, then we will not be moving forward with funding it. I say that with the caveat that we do have to have a site in South King County in order to meet the both needs of our community that I think council members have been discussing tonight, but also the requirements of our funding package and what the voters have asked us to do. For that reason, I just want to offer our support for continued engagement and discussion about how we can best cite this in South King County, whether that is in Federal Way or another jurisdiction.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. Council President.
Kelly, in your procurement process, are you talking about a certain number of beds? Are you talking about just any beds? Because we have a small facility. Are you looking for a large facility? Because you're talking about all of South King County.
The specific thing that our Crisis Care Center levy funds is five crisis care centers that include three different components of care. One is an urgent care, so that you can walk in at any time of day, any day of the week, and get access to immediate behavioral health care. It might be that your typical therapist is closed on the weekend, or it might be that your prescription has ended and you're unable to get that refilled over the weekend because your work hours changed that week. That kind of access to our urgent care clinic will be available. The second option that it allows for is an observation unit that is, I believe, about 30 beds for, or chairs, rather, for folks to be able to be served up to 24 hours. And so, that's a longer-term opportunity for folks to be able to get the support and stability that they need, and then be able to return to their place in the community. And then, the last thing that it would fund is a 16-bed portion that would allow up to 14-day stay. So, it is bigger than just a 16-bed facility, it is different than an outpatient facility.
So, how would our facility, which is 16 beds, how would that, how would that fit? I mean, Connection, RI, the facility that they're looking at is only 16 beds.
Council President, unfortunately, I cannot speak tonight to what Connections' plan would be for this facility.
No, the building itself, the building itself is only 16 beds.
That is my understanding as well. So, I cannot speak to what their plan is for their application, I can speak to what our procurement requests out of the sites that will be developed.
So, what would be the total beds that you would be looking at?
It's a more complicated question to answer, so I'm trying to make sure that I get you the appropriate detail. The capacity of the facility comes in three different types, so there are only 16 beds, but there are also chairs for up to 23 hours and outpatient offices for the urgent care. So, the capacity is throughout all three of those types of care.
Well, I did, part of what was communicated to the council by myself and the chief is, not only is it right next door to the community center, it's literally across the street from the headquarters of the school district, a short walking distance from City Hall diagonally, and on the same side of the street as where all, many of the city employees park, that's with overflow parking. Councilor Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am really torn with this resolution. I do share the mayor's concern about the location of this crisis center, but at the same time, I agree with Councilmember McDaniel and Councilmember Dovi that we do need this type of service in our city. Councilmember Dovi pointed out that this facility is not just going to serve the homeless population, for general public. It could be one of us, it could be me, for example, right? And I appreciate the chief sharing the crime rate from the other facility, however, he did point out that the crime rate does not break down the welfare check or the drop call, 911 drop call, or the actual incident that created by the patient of that facility. So, even with this data, there's no strong indication that most of the calls generated by this type of facility. So, like I said, I mean, I'm really torn about this, and that the idea of, if most of us on this council, I often heard for the last few years, that we do need something like this in the city. Many of you share that concern, right? We talk about it. But then, if we don't do it, if we don't take the chance to do it, then who is going to do it? I mean, the idea of not in my house, then, I mean, Auburn or Renton or some other city will have the same mentality like we do, right? Not in my house. So, where do these people go when they are in crisis? So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
All right. Councilor Honda? All right. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Kelly, are you still online?
I am, Councilmember.
Can you define for us what cities you're looking at in South King County? Is it Auburn, Kent, Des Moines? Well, Renton may or may not be in South King County.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. According to the implementation plan and the ballot measure, the South King County region is everything south of Seattle, over to Renton, and south to the Pierce County line. So Renton would be included in the South King County region, as well as Toquilla, Bury, and Sea Tech, et cetera, and then down to federal way Auburn.
Okay. So my understanding of the Linwood facility that was built out and ready for, ready for people to be there is that they don't have the funding to take care of people. Is that correct? Do you know anything about that?
That is my understanding of the challenge of the facility as well.
So if we were to have a facility here, the funding that Connections is applying for from the county would assure us that the facility would be used?
That is certainly our commitment. The funding that we offer complements Medicaid and other private insurance funds by offering additional operating funds, both to ensure that operators have sufficient funding overall, but also to ensure individuals who may not have insurance or coverage for this specific type of facility can be able to access it within their means. It also provides funding for post-crisis care to make sure that folks have support transitioning from this care. I heard a little bit of questions about transportation. And so really offers that robust funding that was not allowed, was not available for the Linwood site.
Can you answer if you have, if King County has heard from any South King County city that will refuse to allow this?
I have not heard from any city on that specific point, Councilmember. As I think was noted, our applications are due on Friday. And so we won't know until then what applicants are looking at for specific sites.
Do you know if other councils have been discussing this like we are tonight?
I have not heard of any other jurisdiction considering. I would have to get back to you on what we got. We had a letter of interest process where applicants could apply. And I think we may have had one other potential operator for South King County, but I haven't heard of any other jurisdictions having the conversation.
Okay. So, you know, I agree with the council members who say that we have had people at the podium for several years saying, let's do something in federal way. Let's have someplace where people in crisis can go. We've all said that at some point. And considering that this is an essential public facility, it could be cited there, even if we don't want it there, it could be cited there. I remember when Telecare was coming in at an L U T C meeting, and Kelly Maloney and I were the only ones at that meeting. And we went back and forth about how, what can we do? And there was nothing we could do to stop it from coming in because that's where they want it to be. That could happen here again. So I, I mean, this isn't going, someone in a mental health crisis could be your neighbor, could be someone in your family. You could take them to St. Francis. St. Francis isn't going to be able to treat them. They're going to have to find somewhere else for them to go. Might not be in King County, might not even be in Pierce County. You don't know where that's going to end up. I think we should just vote on it. Thank you.
Yeah, Kelly, I have a quick question for you. You still there?
I am, Councilmember.
Okay.
Happy to try to answer.
No problem. My question, as you had mentioned earlier, you guys are looking for someone to have a resolution or a letter supporting it. That's kind of a thing that makes it a lot easier for you guys to approve it. Now, the question, if I understood correctly, that Councilmember Honda just asked is if anybody else has done a letter or done a resolution. And to the best of your knowledge, at this moment, even though it doesn't shut off till Friday, there is no other jurisdictions at the moment, correct?
I'm not aware of any other jurisdiction having this conversation.
Gotcha. And then if no jurisdiction step up to the plate, then you guys will actually pick the location, correct?
If no jurisdiction support an applicant this funding round, we would move forward to our next funding round, which is scheduled for this fall, where we would repeat this process again. This time, early in this process, in order to encourage jurisdictions to identify sites that they support, we have said we will not fund a site if a jurisdiction is not supportive. The next procurement round, we will be looking to prioritize sites with jurisdiction support, but we'll be balancing that with needing to move forward and get these sites developed. So the farther into the timeline of the levy we get, the more King County in the implementation plan and by council ordinance will need to assert our ability to cite these. But this early in the process, we will not be citing any sites without jurisdiction support.
Gotcha. So pretty much this one would be free, but the next one would be if no one steps up, there will be a requirement by the, by your guys' organization or group to look for a location at that point?
When it is within zoning and when we can have a city alignment, I would say. We're still developing that specific procurement process. So we're trying to find the right balance.
All right. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Dovi.
Yeah, Kelly, my question is, does the letter of approval or support have to be company specific? Or can it be general? So multiple ones could bid on it.
There are three components that our applicants have been asked to get in a letter in order to be prioritized. Again, the letter, what that does is prioritize an application amongst others. We are only able to fund two more applicants this funding round. We've already funded one site in North King County that was ready to launch. And so we have funding for two more sites this funding round. With that, the letters that applicants have been asked to get are tasked with both supporting the applicant themselves, expressing zoning is in alignment with that use, and ultimately supporting the site. And so the more detail a letter has about that support, the easier it will be for us to prioritize. The less detail would cause us to come back to the jurisdiction and ask for clarity.
Well, the reason, the reason I asked my question, and maybe I wasn't totally clear, but we've been asked by one individual group to support this. In testimony today, we heard there's another one that's interested, and who knows, there could be a third, but they haven't been here or talked to us. So if the city was open, we have the zoning and we're open to the facility and don't name a specific company, does that count as support from the city?
Councilmember, you are asking me to answer a question that is hard to do outside of our formal procurement process, but I want to be as transparent as possible. What I would say is the most information a community can provide to us, the better it enables us to figure out how to move forward. And so while I've given you the three components that will help us really understand exactly where a city stands, any information to us at this stage will help us make decisions.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember.
Mayor, I'm going to excuse myself. I will try to rejoin by Zoom at home.
Okay. This may be resolved by then. Councilmember Lydia Sepadoson.
Take care.
Thank you, Mayor. This question is also for Kelly. So the, wherever the site might be, when, once approved, this funding cycle, when do they start being operational? And same question for the fall procurement. When would they start?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. That will depend on an application and the process that we go through with the community is unfortunately the level of detail that I have for you. The funding model that we have for the levy assumes that our sites will not be operational until at least 2026. But it really depends on how ready a site is. Having had a conversation with you all about our ability to open sites earlier today, we have learned about our construction and timing a bit. So we, the best that I can share is we will navigate with each specific applicant what that timeline looks like.
So they make that determination, not you, and it's probably in the packet then, on their application?
Correct. We would expect that applicants share, depending on how much construction is necessary for the build out, how long they expect it to take.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Councilmember Honda, and then, and then Councilmember Dovi. But that, at some point, somebody needs to make a motion. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Kelly, I have a question for you. If only four council members vote to support this resolution, and the mayor is not supporting this, does that show King County that federal way supports this?
Thank you, Councilmember. If an applicant submits a letter of support from a jurisdiction, we will be confirming that support as a follow-up with the jurisdiction, and then we would navigate from there. And so as I, I think I've shared, but just to reiterate, our goal here is to move forward on sites as quickly as possible when we have full jurisdiction support. If we end up in a place tonight where you end up in a four to three vote, we will both take that indication of support, but we will also want to move very collaboratively forward to make sure that we are able to address any concerns and take that level of support into consideration.
So that doesn't sound very positive. Thank you very much for your answer.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Dovi.
Yeah, I have a suggestion on this. I think there's, you know, I can count, and it's a split vote, whatever we're going to do. But I just heard that this is, if nobody has a letter and no city is in this, this is going to be revisited in the fall. And that, I mean, I'm for doing something like this, but I think we take, if we had to take our chance and say, okay, let's consolidate what we want and how to support it. If we vote not to support one company tonight to move forward, because it doesn't sound like we can just put a letter of support and anybody could jump onto it, it gives us a lot of time to really think it through. I mean, we, we got to get the Red Lion thing figured out that's coming online. We got the Day Center, and we have the, whatchamacallit, the other place coming online. So it doesn't seem like we lose out, but going into something this big and it's really not a lot of support, I'm not sure that we've really cooked it the way we should. But that's just my thought. I'm listening to everything.
All right. If there is no, if there is no motion to move forward, the resolution would just die. But Council President.
I just have one quick one. It's legal. If this is a four-three vote, does mayor have the ability to veto this?
No, it's a resolution.
So resolutions are not vetoed?
Right.
Okay.
And I did want to opine a little bit about how they would interpret. King County can interpret the resolution as they see fit, but we don't forward the voting pattern of council. A passing vote is a passing vote. It's the position of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion before the body? Is there a motion before the body? I'll ask one more time before we move to the next item. Is there a motion before the body? Hearing none, we'll move to the next item. Thank you very much. Item B. 2024 Program Year Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAPR. Staff presentation from Leila Wilson.
Hey, guys. Give me one second here. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Farrell, President Koshmar, and council members. Again, my name's Leila with the Human Services Department, and I'll be presenting our 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. So a policy question for this evening would be, should the city council approve the 2024 Program Year Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report? What the CAPR, let me take this off of here for you. What the CAPR, what is the CAPR is, it reports on how the city has utilized our CDBG Community Development Block Fund, which we have expanded our economic opportunities, preserve affordable housing, to prevent and address homelessness, and establish and maintain suitable living environments. It also describes the accomplishments for the program year from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024. At this point, we are due to submit our report as a final draft to HUD by March 31. So that's where we are this evening and going forward by the end of this month. Some highlights that we would like to show is that we have expended $1,052,317 in CDBG funds, have assisted 293 persons, and the majority of the funds were used to assist very low to low-income persons, with all funds supporting low to moderate-income persons as federally required. These are some highlights, some pictures that we were able to capture from our Habitat for Humanity Minor Home Repair and saving or keeping this home up to code. Here we have a deck that was transformed with stairs that gives access to the backside of the home and make that more suitable for those living environments as well. Other key accomplishments with the Housing Repair Program, we've completed 12 repairs. In partnership with Highline College and African Community Housing Development, we have provided technical assistance to businesses, which include established businesses and startups, providing them also with technical assistance for general business, technical assistance, sorry. And as well as Fusion, which is local to us, they purchased a condo for transitional housing and installed their new windows for their family center just locally down the street. It looks really great. So at this point, we would like to ask if you would like to approve the proposed 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or do not approve the proposed 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and provide direction to staff. We would like mayor's recommendation for option one. Any questions?
Councilmember Dovi, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. If you go back a couple slides where you said a million, you go back, the numbers. Okay, we expended $1,052,317 and assisted 293 people. Does that mean we basically use, those people all got about $3,600 in repairs, or something happened? Or is it skewed differently, less people and a lot to Fusion? Or is this the total number and it was dispersed to these 293 projects? Or is it skewed, somebody got $900,000 and everybody else got $10?
I'm going to apologize because I did not have the direct allocations. But yes, to the second part of that question, it's not 293 persons that were directly given the breakdown of that. So the million was to oversee the Highline and African Community Housing.
So if you go to your next slide where you said, keep going forward now, I just want to, forget about the pictures. Okay, the next one back. So when you go to the one before the recommendation, I was trying to understand. So I'm, so we did 12 housing repairs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then we gave money to the Highline College African Community Housing, and then we gave money to Fusion, and that made the million?
Yes.
Got it. I just, I was thinking, wow, we helped 293 people with $3,000 repair. That's a great deal. But that's not what we really did, right?
And those repairs, they average on the low end from $1,000 up to $10,000. I think the minimum per a repair could be the minimum per a repair could be $12,000 or so. Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure. So it's 12 repairs, some money to this program, and probably a big bucket to Fusion. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Yeah, do you have the actual breakdown of the million for each one of those three, or is?
We do. Like I said, I probably, I don't have it directly here with me. I know the Fusion, that was a little over $200,000 and some change. I think Highline was another 100, African Community was another 100, and then...
We can, we can get that to you, councilmember, if you're interested.
Yeah, I'm just curious to see how the split was, and the average repair costs and stuff like that. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no question, no further questions. Council President Kochmar?
I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see it. Councilmember Sephardasen?
Thank you, ma'am. So, for 2025, I know I've heard that CDBG was gonna be impacted in terms of funding. Do we have that information yet, and how are we gonna be affected?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear your question.
My understanding is CDBG is one of the funds that is gonna be affected for 2025 from the federal government, and so I wanted to know how that's gonna impact our 2025 goals and, and the funding allocation that we'd already done.
We have not...
Do you know yet?
Yeah, we do not know. We have not received anything in regards to that.
So if anything comes through, then it goes to the Human Services Commission and then back to council at that point?
Yes, it would. We would, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Council President Kochmar?
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. I, I know that it's a lot of work for our Human Services Commission to go through all the programs and decide who gets what. And I do know that Fusion, for years, we've been giving them a little over $100,000, probably much more now, for their condos. I think we're up to 23 or 24 now for the Fusion condos.
It could be. I don't know.
Somewhere in there. But I do know that they were very happy with the new windows at the Pete Anderson Family Center, and they're very expensive. And I know too, because I put a couple of new windows in my house, and I was shocked. But anyway, they, they were very thankful for that. So thank you. So I move, in the absence of Councilmember Walsh, I move approval of the proposed 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
Second.
It's been a motion. The second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matters pass unanimously. Thank you very much. Great job, Leila. Okay, now we are on to item C, Authorization of Purchase City Works Software. EJ Walsh, Republic Works Director, will give a staff presentation.
So, good evening, mayor, members of council. This is a little bit of a housekeeping item. So as you may recall, this went through LUTC and was on the last council meeting, and incorporated a interlocal agreement with the city of Everett, which has been executed, and also the authorization to actually purchase the software. Out of an abundance of caution, the, the agenda bill at the last meeting was intended to cover both of those topics, but it can be read in a way that it does or does not include the entire term of the contract. So just, this is a large contract, and for the sake of clarity and the sake of the record, we wanted to come back and just confirm with council authorization to actually buy the software, not just enter the interlocal agreement. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions. In summary, this is being purchased out of surface water management. It's to meet our NPDS permit requirements, and it is within the budget that is approved for 2025.
All right. Any questions for EJ? I see some microphones on. Councilmember McDaniel?
The only question I have is, it was in the, was it part of the budget, or is it just this money in the budget we can use for it?
No, it was part of the budget.
Okay, that was it.
All right. Councilmember Doby?
Yeah, I moved approval of the proposed purchase of the City Works software in the amount of $298,917.50.
Second.
It's been a motion. Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matters pass unanimously. Should be noted for the last two votes, Councilmember Walsh is, do you have that, that he's been absent? And maybe, obviously, let's have people looking for when he joins online. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. I see Evan Lewis is here for item nine, ordinances first reading. Item A, Council Bill 900, ordinance Title 18, annual code clarifications, cleanups, corrections, and consistency amendments. We'll have a presentation from Evan Lewis, our senior planner. Evan?
Good evening, Mayor Farrell and councilmembers. This and the next agenda item are our code clarifications, cleanups, corrections, and consistency amendments. I will start with part one for Title 18. As staff review projects, we find code that has errors, inconsistency with state law, and sometimes with wording that confuses staff and applicants and can lead to the inconsistent application of our code. It's been about two years since our last code cleanup ordinance, and tonight's is less than one-third of our total list. So we do expect to be back this fall with our next code cleanup ordinance. Tonight, there are 17 amendments. We'll start with four from Title 18. So, the policy question, should city council amend federalway revised code Title 18 to improve the consistency, clarity, accuracy of that code title for the purpose of correcting errors, complying with state law, improving clarity and consistency, and reducing code ambiguity? The first deals with our boundary line adjustment approval criteria. So, criterion five currently reads, BLAs shall not circumvent city code requirements associated with a land division approval or an obligation to pay latecomer fees. And this criterion has become particularly confusing when applicants who intend to subdivide land do a BLA immediately prior or concurrent with that subdivision application to establish the perimeter lot lines around a site. The code amendment provides a more specific, but still non-inclusive, list of city requirements that BLAs shall not circumvent, and also specifies which may be required as a condition of approval on boundary line adjustments. This specificity should help to clarify whether a BLA is or is not circumventing city code requirements when BLAs are proposed concurrent with subdivision applications. The next, one, it ensures our code's consistency with state law with regard to plat alterations, and also, state law allows cities to adopt a provision where the, the decision maker for plat alterations is at the staff level. Right now, our code defaults to the hearing examiner. So if someone applies for plat alteration, it would go to a public hearing. We have to bring in the hearing examiner extra time and expense for staff, for applicants. And so, we are, this would also ensure that the default decision maker for plat alterations is at the staff level. Now, if a member of the public gets the notice and they request a public hearing, then we will have a public hearing, but it doesn't just automatically go to the public hearing with this amendment. The next, when we send review letters for land use projects, land use applications, and we send them frequently, that sending of the letter starts 180-day clock that allows us to then expire the application if an applicant hasn't responded within 180 days. But our code says all of those letters have to be sent by mail, and it's 2025, and we've, that's not really consistent with our main communication methods with applicants. And so this amendment just changes the words "by mail" to "in writing," which should save a lot of unnecessary mailings that, that our code currently requires. And the last under Title 18 is to move our cluster subdivision design guidelines to our subdivision code. Right now, most of our subdivision design guidelines are in Title 18 where they should be. There's a rogue section of cluster subdivision design guidelines in Title 19, and it's just caused some confusion, particularly if you're a new staff person, like, may easily miss where those design guidelines are, and it's always confusing for applicants. So it's just moving that to Title 18. In doing that, in response, actually, to the, the one comment that we got in this amendment from the Department of Commerce, we are deleting the first, the first cluster subdivision design criteria that garages shall be provided for all residential lots, except if the lot is in a multifamily zone. That is now inconsistent with state law, based on a law that was passed last year. So that will go away with this amendment. This went to LUTC on the March 3rd, and we hope it's on track for adoption by, or at the April 1st meeting. There's one public comment from the Department of Commerce, and that is in your packet. The development regulation amendment criteria is also outlined in the staff report, and the options are to forward the proposed ordinance to the April 1st, 2025 council meeting for second reading and adoption, or do not forward the proposed ordinance and provide direction to staff. And the mayor's recommendation for this Title 18 ordinance is option one.
All right, council. Any questions? Evan? All right. Councilmember Doby?
Yeah, I moved to forward the proposed ordinance to the April 1st, 2025 council meeting for second reading.
Actually, I jumped the gun.
You gotta read it first.
I, I knew that. First of all, actually, is there any public comment?
We just have to have something before the last meeting.
Exactly. Is there any public comment?
I don't have anyone signed up, mayor. No.
All right. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 900, ordinance Title 18, annual code clarifications, cleanups, corrections, and consistency amendments, and ordinance of the city of Federway, Washington relating to amendments that improve consistency, clarity, and the accuracy of the federway revised code Title 18, amending federway revised code 1805080, 1810010, 1845010, 1845040, 1855040, and repealing 1845050.
All right. Now, Councilmember Doby?
Okay, now I'll read the green line. I moved to forward the proposed ordinance to the April 1st, 2025 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
It's been a motion. It's been a motion. The second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matters pass unanimously. Item B, Council Bill 901, ordinance Title 19, annual code clarifications, cleanups, corrections, and consistency amendments. Evan?
All right. This is part two of the code cleanup ordinance for our Title 19 zoning code amendments. The policy question is the same as Title 18, but for Title 19, and has the same purpose. The first one has been moved to the front of the list with regard to fences on or near rockeries and retaining walls, because this is the amendment in this, in this ordinance that generated discussion and follow-up from LUTC. So, I think some, some context is helpful for this one. Our, our code prohibits most structures within setbacks. However, it provides a list, then, of 11 exceptions of certain structures that can intrude into setbacks. Among those is an exception for fences and for rockeries or retaining walls. Fences within setbacks, as part of that exception, are limited to six feet high. And anywhere, most rockeries and retaining walls are already limited to six feet high, whether they're in a setback or not. Outside of setbacks, there's more options for, for expanding the height of rockeries and retaining walls, but within setbacks there are not. So that's what our code current, currently says. What's become unclear is when rockeries and retaining walls are so close together that they appear like one massive wall or fence. And aesthetically, that's not a necessarily desirable look to have these massive, the appearance of these massive walls and fences around the city, particularly in residential areas. And we've, in the past, had internal interpretations to provide some clarity on that issue and how to apply code to address that issue. So tonight's amendment clarifies that when fences and rockeries or retaining walls are within five feet of each other, within a setback, that their heights are combined together and cannot exceed six feet. LUTC raised concerns, in particularly, in particular that higher retaining walls might need some safety provisions for, for fall protection. So, based on that, we have added a provision for safety features in conjunction with retaining walls that is actually informed by our, our building code, and we've consulted with building staff. So if you have the most extreme example of a six-foot retaining wall, it, this provision that's been added since LUTC would allow up to a three-and-a-half-foot safety feature. Those numbers sound very specific for a reason, because it has to be based on some, something, some reasonable provision that may exist in, in our building code. And the closest similar provision in our building code is for walking surfaces. There's no exact provision like this for safety features on retaining walls in our building code, but on walking surfaces, where there is a, a drop of more than two-and-a-half feet, our building code says you have to have at least a three-and-a-half-foot guardrail. And so that was a reasonable, a reasonable comparison to inform what's a reasonable standard to allow for the safety feature on top of retaining walls. So, after the LUTC packet was sent, there was some additional desire expressed for, for further clarity on this specific provision. And so, the text shown here is new. This was not in your packet. It was sent around, I think, to, in a communication today. And thank you very much, Stephanie and Ryan, for incorporating this late addition. I know it was unexpected, so thank, just thank you for accommodating that, and, and getting that circulated to council. So the text shown here is, all of this text is that safety provision that's applied both to the rockeries and retaining walls portion of our setback exceptions, as well as fences. And what's in red is what was not in your packet originally that was sent last week, but was, was added today. Just clarifications that that safety provision includes not just safety guardrails, but also handrails for fall protection, but it also addresses more of the aesthetic part of this. It adds that the safety feature shall incorporate openings or gaps, and shall not present a solid or continu- continuous visual surface ensuring visibility through the safety feature. So the intent was just not to have basically a, an expansion of an existing wall, that it truly is a safety feature for safety purposes, but that it has some, some gaps between it. So it's just not, if, if we're allowing this additional height for a safety feature so that this contiguous wall can be nine-and-a-half feet, that that safety feature has some see-through, transparent elements. So that's the first. This is the, the more difficult of all of these Title 19 amendments, and given its kind of complexity, we can take questions now, or if you'd prefer, we can save that to the end of, of this presentation. What would the preference be?
Let's do it right now. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. Do other cities have this code?
The, the code in general adjusts the safety provision.
Just what we're doing tonight.
I, I don't know. So this, this is already exists, this already exists in our code, these height limits within setbacks. So I, I'm, I'm not sure what, what other cities have this, this restriction on height limits for these features and setbacks.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Yeah, mine's more of a comment. I, I could not believe when this first came up in LUTC, how much conversation we had about it. But walking out my house the other day, I saw two of my neighbors who have this exact thing going on. So I just want to let you guys know that I find this to be an ingenious way that you guys put this in there and the way you guys came about with this. So kudos to you guys. That was pretty interesting.
Councilmember Doby?
Yeah, two comments. I, like Councilman McDaniel, went around my neighbors and looked at what we had and found many options where this is gonna, would be a problem. But since everybody's grandfathered that already has something, I'm okay with this. I do have one problem with the safety feature, three feet and see-through. You know, if I got a lab in my yard, and it jumps to get out of my yard, three feet and looking through it, it causes a real problem if I'm new building a fence. So I get the aesthetics of three feet, but I think we're missing people with pets and, you know, this is a very specific place. We're talking about six-foot wall and three feet, but I'm willing to move this forward. But I think we have to have some discussion on this one thing, because if, I'm a pet owner, I'm not talking me myself, but if I buy my house and I go by this, and I only go three feet, and I decide to get a Doberman Pinscher that's gonna jump...
Where you got a small dog, you gotta pet the dog.
And they get through the hole.
Trip over the fence and fall down the wall.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I think there might be something else. Bringing it up.
So, I think, and, and to get back to the conversation we had at council committee, you know, the idea is that you would stagger it by five feet so that you could build your six-foot fence to keep the lab in on top of the six-foot retaining wall, but there'd be a horizontal separation of at least five feet there. If you wanted to put the fall protection on top of the existing six-foot rockery to make sure there's a fall protection safety, because you don't have the lab, you could do it directly on top of the rockery. So I think we've got it covered in both directions, hopefully. Okay. We always think about jumping labs.
Did you have more?
Yeah, this is the first one, but this was the more difficult one. So the rest we can hopefully breeze through faster. So, the first two, just simply add in language in our code that's required by state law that we just don't have in our code. So it's copy paste. One adds state-required property valuation statements to two of our land use decision chapters that didn't have this language. And the next is to ensure that the size and quality of affordable units is consistent with market rate units. Copy and paste from state law. The next is the same one covered in Title 18, removing the cluster subdivision design guidelines to Title 18, but it technically... guidelines to Title 18, but it technically involved a code amendment to both Title 19 and 18. And the next, the same one about allowing us to just email letters or provide those letters in writing to applicants, not mailing them, is also being added to our land use, our land use processes in Title 19. The next clarifies that severe weather and disaster shelters are temporary uses, and it establishes a definition for temporary use processes that, that where we would review severe weather and disaster shelters. And then, to clarify, warming and cooling centers, we got applications for warming and cooling centers, we would regulate them under that new definition that this adds, and we would regulate them as a temporary use subject to the temporary use process that's added in our temporary use code. The next clarifies the definition of facades to be any building face. That, there's some unclarity in our code. There's a couple of ways one could interpret the definition of facade. The intent of, of, and this mainly comes up in our design guidelines, where, where the intent of our design guidelines is that they apply to all building faces unless otherwise stated, and often, it does say, this justifies, applies to building faces that are visible from the public right-of-way. But, the default, the baseline, is that, that facades are all building faces, and so, the facade definition was clarified to state that. The next ensures that corner lots along specifically arterials and principal and primary collectors can be deemed the front property line. Right now, our code says when you have a corner lot and it happens to be on a principal collector and an arterial, the, the front, which, which one do you pick? Well, the front is the, is the street side that is the primary vehicle access to the property, but then, it also says the primary vehicle access cannot be the principal collector, cannot be a principal collector or an arterial, so it creates an impossible situation where we, we can't technically designate a front property line, and there's a lot of zoning code provisions that apply to that front property line, so the amendment clarifies how we can deal with that situation. And it, right now, our calls, code also says that the applicant is the one who, who determines which is the front, but the language is clarified so that it can also be the city, and I think usually would end up being the city, based on information that the applicant is providing, usually in their, their traffic impact analysis and other information in their application materials, so we, we can deem which, which side for corner lots is gonna be the front of that property. The next clarifies review processes for improvements and additions to developed sites. So, when you have an already developed site where then, let's say, the building on the left here already exists, and then you're adding another building that's slightly, slightly larger or, or smaller, the, there's often more streamlined review processes for already-developed sites and adding uses like that, but the section of our code that deals with this is quite confusing, and it, it's kind of this choose-your-own-adventure that's been interpreted a lot of different ways, and we've relied on some internal interpretations, which is never great when you, when you can avoid it, and so, this just clarifies how to determine which review process to require for different uses when you're developing already-developed sites. The next ensures that we have consistent notice board requirements across all of our land use decisions, since right now, they're not, and so, that's just a simple copy paste to ensure that the, those requirements are all the same across the board. The next deals with subdivisions on sites that have slopes of 15% or more. Right now, our code, in addition to our cluster subdivision provisions, which allow reduced lot sizes on sites that are heavily constrained by critical areas, for example, another option is also lot size averaging, and in our, in our clearing and grading code, it says, the following provisions for, for these items, including lot size averaging, are all recommended. It's not a required section, and then, there's certain requirements, subbullets essentially, that read like they are requirements, but legally, since they're under a broader section that declares itself as an optional section with recommendations, it can be confusing, it can lead, could potentially lead staff to apply requirement, apply as requirements code provisions that legally are not actually requirements. So, this amendment clarifies that. The next deals with landscaping tracks in residential multifamily zones and says that, that landscaping along right-of-ways must be in its own landscaping tract only when it's associated with a subdivision, and that may seem obvious, but the way that code provision leads, it isn't, it doesn't come across as obvious, and so, we never want to be in a position of making someone apply for a subdivision just to put the landscaping in a, in a tract when otherwise they're proposing multifamily on a single parcel. So, if only, if they're, they're applying for a multifamily subdivision, would we require the landscaping to be in a tract? We'd still require the landscaping, but only a tract when it's in a subdivision. The next just increases consistency between zones for our ground floor retail depth requirements. This is like the, the distance within a building laterally, horizontally, that retail uses can go, and there was some unusual inconsistency betw- there was, all of our zones were consistent on this issue except for our residential multifamily zone, so even when you have like, like, like uses between zones, we had this, this rogue, odd limitation for residential multifamily for the same uses where in other zones, they set different retail depth requirements. The next just clarifies requirements for how we approve or don't approve parking studies that reduce off-street parking requirements, since right now, it just says you can get a reduction in your off-street parking with a parking study, but it doesn't provide any, any criteria or the decision-maker for that, like most of our code modification options do, so this amendment adds those criteria and identifies the Public Works Director as the decision-maker for those. And the last one is our parking lot design criteria is only vaguely referenced in code. We actually have a specific bulletin that lives outside of code, that has the force of code, so just to ensure there's no ambiguity in, in where that lives and its enforceability, the parking lot design criteria bulletin is just specifically referenced in code. And this is on the same hopeful adoption timeline as the Title 18 ordinance, that one public comment from Department of Commerce, same development regulation criteria, and the one change to the options is, option one, forward the proposed ordinance to the April 1st council meeting for second reading. The one that's been added based on the, the late addition of the fence retaining wall amendment is forward the proposed ordinance with the modifications presented tonight to the April 1st, 2025 council meeting for second read and enactment, or do not forward the proposed ordinance and provide direction to staff, and the mayor's recommendation is option two.
Council, any questions, Ethan? All right, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right. Would this city clerk please read the ordinance's title?
I did want to note, Councilmember Walsh has rejoined the meeting at the beginning of this presentation.
Great. Thank you.
Council Bill 901, Ordinance Title 19 Annual Code Clarifications, Cleanups, Corrections, and Consistency Amendments, An Ordinance of the City of Federway, Washington Relating to Amendments That Improve the Consistency, Clarity, and Accuracy of the Federway Revised Code Title 19, Amending Federway Revised Code 1905060, 1905160, 1905190, 1915030, 1915050, 1955040, 1960070, 1965070, 1970060, 19110010, 19120110, 19125060, 19125160, 19130080, 19130160, 19205040, 19220105, 19225055, 19230055, 19240095, 19275020, 19275030, 19275040, and repealing 19115120.
All right. Councilmember Dovey?
Yes, I moved to forward the proposed ordinance with modifications presented tonight to the April 1, 2025 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
Second.
It's been a motion to second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passing unanimously. Great job, Ethan. Why don't you take the rest of the night off? Wow. All right. Council reports, Councilmember Dovey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I want to compliment whoever fixed our computers up here so we can actually see the screens. Thank you for doing that, whoever did it. I appreciate it. I can read everything now. And then, I wanted to mention that the Ramsey class for financial freedom, I think we're up to 150 graduates, plus or minus a few, and we have another class going that Lydia helped start, that's got 20 people in it right now, so we're getting close to 175 people that have been through the programs, and the next class will be, I believe, in April, they'll be starting up, so that's a little success, and a lot of people being through those classes so far. I will say, in seven years, I think it is, I've never been to the raise, the flag raising for St. Patty's Day. I went this year, it was actually fantastic, I thought it was well-done, so I appreciate all the volunteers that made that happen, and the mayor had a great speech with some great fun facts that I'll try to remember. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
Really no report. My apologies for, anyway, my apologies, so, and nothing more to report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilor Tran?
No report from me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Honda?
So far away. I just want to remind people of coffee and conversation with the city council and the school board this Saturday, March 22nd, from 10 to noon at Eberney and Ivory Coffee, which is over on Warhouser Way, really cute little coffee store, and we hope that people come. We've had very good conversations with folks who've come to visit us before, and we hope to see you on Saturday. I also want to remind people of the Senior Health and Resource Fair. It is Thursday, May 15th, from 10 to 1:00 at the Performing Arts and Event Center. It's a free event, and this is our, our third year, a great event, and it's not just for seniors, it's for anyone who is around a senior, who will be a senior one day. And then, this week is Transit Appreciation Week in King County, and, you know, transit has had a hard time lately, so today is actually Transit Operator Appreciation Day, and if you know someone who is a transit operator, call them and say thank you for, for what they do. They have a hard job. Thank you.
Council, Councilmember Gahan?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to start by actually thanking Congressman Smith for being the only federal elected official who actually met with us. It would've been nice if the senators would've been able to make the time to make it happen. I found NLC to be interesting this year. I'm a little embarrassed with some of the elected officials who don't seem to act their age when people are speaking, but that's something we'll have to deal with in the future. I do think that the associations we belong to and the travel is something we might want to talk about in the future, to make sure that we're getting the best bang for the buck off some of these trips. I'm gonna, I'd like to thank the council, actually, for the conversation today on the Crisis Center. It's gonna come back in the fall, and when it comes back in the fall, once the resolution is changed, we have a medical license, operator license lockdown, so we do have a kill switch. I will support that, and I will make a motion if needed. I'd like to see that happen. I think it's something worthwhile, but I'd like to see, make sure we have some safeties in place beforehand. And the last one is, I'd like to thank Stephanie. She helped me quite a bit, and I talked her off the other day trying to get every little bit of institutional knowledge she had, you know, yeah, she can say that, but it was very helpful, insightful, and she's probably the first person to send me an email letting me know I broke the law within a week of being here for sending stuff out to people I shouldn't have. So, I just want to let you know that I appreciate everything you did for me, and I hope you the best of luck. Thank you.
Councilmember Seppa Dawson?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to say thank you to Stephanie once again. I wish I was there today, but unfortunately, I'm not there, but hopefully, we'll be in touch, and I really appreciate all the work that you do. Thank you for this meeting. It's 12:30 where I'm at, so I am ready to go to bed, and so, with that, I end my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, council president?
Don't forget the diaper drive on Saturday. We'll be at Fred Meyer at 10 o'clock. Come on over and shop and buy some diapers or some wipes, baby wipes, and again, best wishes, Stephanie. We wish you all the best in the future.
Great. All right. Thank you, everybody. Great, great meeting. We are adjourned.